America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the August 12th County Commission Meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the counter next to Commissioner Kelly. And if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row. Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, or any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of August 5th, 2014.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $481,705.77.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second on the bills. Are there any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item four are reports. A, the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of July 31st, 2014. B, the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department report for July 2014. And C, the Minnehaha Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for July 2014. Those have all been placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A, consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second on routine actions. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. There are no application for abatements today. Item seven are notice and requests. Authorize the county auditor to post a notice of hearing to consider the 2014 budget supplements to various county department budgets. Good morning, Darlene.
Good morning. This is, I'm Darlene Johnson from the auditor's office. We're requesting that you authorize our office to post notice of public hearing to consider several supplements to the 2014 budget. The general fund supplements will total $65,227.24. Several of these items in the museum budgets and human services budgets are the result of some changes recommended by Department of Legislative Audit. The other item is the county insurance budget for 2013 payments for the fairgrounds property insurance. There are also two supplements totaling $136,172 in the building fund for ongoing projects.
Are there any questions for Darlene? Or is it entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion to post notice.
Second.
A motion is second to authorize the county auditor to post notice of hearing to consider the 2014 budget's supplements. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is item one, a petition for compromise of lien. John Pecus.
Thank you. This is on DP No. 84464 in the amount of $175, and DP No. 84761 in the amount of $973.25. The applicant currently is requesting a compromise of two liens without any payment. And I know that at first blush, that would be something that this commission would take a dim view of. However, given the fact that both of these liens total $1,148.25, the unique perspective that we have to come at these two liens is that this was an action that was actually initiated by the current applicant for the benefit of the adult niece of this particular applicant who was having an acute situation. And she sought an involuntary commitment. This is unique because unfortunately in South Dakota law, if you actually have a family member that is in distress through either drugs or alcohol, and you seek to actually help them through an involuntary commitment because they're in a unique circumstance where they're not going to help themselves, you can actually have them committed against their will. Unfortunately, believe it or not, the benefit, even though it goes to the adult individual who receives the benefit, the bill is actually paid by the person that made the application. So if you're actually seeking to try to help your loved one, your family member, that's all well and good, even though they receive the medical treatment, you're stuck paying the bill. That's what we have in this particular circumstance. It's come up before, before this commission. It's never actually been resolved by the legislature to help clarify this circumstance. However, in this particular instance, the applicant had a 26-year-old niece. She has a substance abuse issue. She requested an IVC, and she wanted her to actually go and seek treatment voluntarily. However, unfortunately, that did not work. And so the only way they could actually proceed is to go through the formal IVC hold process. And once again, the cost of that was once again placed against the aunt who was trying to help her niece. Once again, the applicant state that her daughter, her niece was in a crisis situation. And both she and her husband, they have a limited financial circumstance. On their 2013 tax returns, they have combined income of $36,000. They have a total assets of $156,250, including a home and several vehicles associated with the auto body repair business. Their liabilities are over $120,000, and that includes the home mortgage, medical bills, credit card bills, and debts to their credit union. So, once again, I will make the motion to go ahead and to release the lien and have no further payment in the amount of $1,148.25 on both of the accounts. I don't know if I'll get a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the compromise of lien. Is the applicant here that they'd like to speak to it? Okay.
Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, you know, see, I think this is the most ridiculous thing in the world. And fortunately, we have the opportunity to, and I think it looked like this only happened in January, that, so, we have the opportunity to forgive this lien right away. And this is, you know, that's the way to go with this thing, I think.
Commissioner Barth?
Well, it is something that, you know, the legislature should resolve. And I think we did bring it to them at one time, and it just didn't go anywhere at that time. But we had had one some years ago, and I think sometimes it behooves us to remember these anecdotal stories where, I believe it was an 84-year-old woman who had sent her grandson to treatment. And she'd been making $25 a month payments for like seven years. And she wrote us a letter and said, "Could you please forgive it? I broke my leg and had to quit my job." So, hell yes, we forgave it. But it wasn't very long after that that there was a case down in Lenox where a woman whose 40-year-old son came home intoxicated, he beat her to death. I mean, what are you supposed to do when your family member is in this position? And the legislature should correct this inequity. And it's not a priority for us because we're hand-to-mouth on money. But go ahead, Ken.
No, no. Yeah, this is an issue that, you know, you've raised before. I mean, we've taken it to, our first step was we tried to take it to our state association. And the state, so we couldn't get it through the Resolutions Committee and that to be adopted by our own association at the time. So, but again, most of those counties, they don't deal with this like what we do.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, other than being stupid, we're probably, our best situation is just what we're doing today. And when we see these things, we'll, you know, we'll forgive them, I would guess. And if the rest of state wants to prosecute them when they have them, well, that's fine. That's their business.
I have a motion and a second. If there's no additional comments, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The next item is an opportunity for public comment. This is the time, if you would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda. I'm not seeing anybody. Okay. We'll move on. Regular business. Item 10 is a public hearing to consider an application for a retail on- and off-sale malt beverage license from Wild Prairie Winery Incorporated, Jeffrey &amp; Victoria Wilde. For Chases Track 1, a portion of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter in Section 16, Township 102 North, Range 48 West, at 48052, 259th Street and Brandon. And this application has been sent to the Planning Department, Sheriff's Office, and State's Attorney's Office. And there were no objections or concerns reported with the approval of the application. And Victoria Wilde is here to answer any questions that you may have. Okay. This is a public hearing, so did you want to say something?
I'm, I'm, we, we can say, we just want to, I guess...
Would you just come up and identify yourself? Sorry.
I will. I'm Victoria Wilde. I'm one of the owners of Wild Prairie Winery. And we just want to add the beer license to kind of bring in more business because we miss out on the people that are, I'd like to say, a couple. I don't know why I'm so nervous today. I'm used to being in front of people. Anyway, couples come in and, or don't come in because one of them doesn't want to come because they don't want wine. So beer is an option for them. So that's why we're trying to do this.
Chair.
Yeah.
So I just have a slight question here. Listening to her legal description of where this is, you know, southeast quarter section of the southwest quarter section, Township 102 North Range, whatever. Where is it?
Yeah. I guess we was asked that, too.
How do you get there from here?
Okay. If you are on Highway 90, Errol's Road.
Yeah.
You know, create that area.
Yep.
You go north from 90, mile and a half. Hang a right, go east, go two and a half miles, and we're in that section on the north side.
So is that also then from Corson? You would go north, a mile and a half, take a left, and...
You go left. Yep.
Yep.
It's a mile and a half from Highway 11. Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
This might be the first time Jeff doesn't know where a liquor store is at.
I take a cab. It's funny.
You'll just have to come out and visit us sometime.
Yes.
This is a public hearing, so is there any opponents? I can see no opponents. So, is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the retail on-off sale malt liquor license. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 11 is to authorize the chairman to sign change order number one for an increase of $36,045 to the contract with Dakota Contracting Corporation for additional rock excavation on Project 50-215-010. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent. This item before you today is basically to pay for some unforeseen conditions out there for rock blasting, that bridge replacement northeast of Del Rapids on a township road right by the school. We did our normal diligence of boring two holes on each side of the bridge. We had consistent rock depths, so it looked like we were good to go. Turns out, because the Sioux Falls quartzite formations are very erratic, the worst thing that could have happened, happened inside those two holes. The rock was much shallower, so we had a lot much more removal. And so that amounts to, at $135 per cubic yard of rock blasting excavation, that amounts to $36,045.
Any questions?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for a change order on a bridge. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We couldn't go without the bridge, so we don't have a choice.
That's pretty much true. Thank you.
That's not even the worst case. The worst one is when we did the 16 test borings out here and $750,000 change order. We figured it out.
There's always more rock than you thought.
Exactly.
Thank you. Item number 12 is consider a bid award for interior concrete paving at the WHLion Fairgrounds Expo Building. The bids were opened on August 5th, 2014. Jason Reeves.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Reeves, Senior Project Engineer at the Highway Department. We put together a set of plans for the fairgrounds to do this concrete work in the expo building. It's the, it should, it's a dirt area inside the expo building, and this should finish off the concrete inside and get that completed. So last week, we did the bidding on it. We had three bids during our bid opening with the low bid being Beck &amp; Hofer Construction with $182,655.15, which was $5.15 difference from what their bid price that was read as because they did some rounding on it. But still the low bidder after that, like I noted in the memo, this is higher than what we had anticipated as far as the engineer's estimate. And the steel, the reinforcing in the concrete was more than what I had estimated, I guess. But I went through and looked at the bid prices, and they all seemed very competitive and fair. So I don't, I don't think, I think it was more of an error on my part than them jacking up the price. So, but my understanding is, is that the $182,000 is still within the budget that is, that they have to construct this. So we are recommending word of the contract to Beck &amp; Hofer.
Are there any questions for Jason? This is a budgeted item.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13 is consider a motion to authorize sale order agreement between Minnehaha County and ES&amp;S Selection Systems and Software for the purchase of two Model DS 850 High-Speed Digital Image Scanner ballot counters in the amount of $217,625 utilizing Help America Vote Act Fund administered by the Secretary of State. This item was deferred from the August 5th meeting.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And as you recall, last week, we were in the middle of discussions about this potential purchase. And there was a question by Commissioner Barth that I would defer to Kirsten Katmeyer for the public portion of answering that.
Sure. There is a question about whether these were subjected to the bid requirements in Chapter 518A of South Dakota Codified Law. I wanted a chance to look at that because I knew there was some specific language around computerized equipment like that. And after looking at the statute referring specifically to 518A 22 subsection 5, which does exempt certain computerized equipment, hardware, software, peripherals, and related connectivity, I think this ballot counting machine, its nature, its function, its attributes falls within that exception. So you're not required to bid that out under 518A if you do not want to. So that is not a requirement. I just wanted to clarify that for you before we acted upon that. So thanks.
Any questions for Auditor Litz?
Make a motion to approve with a comment.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second with a comment from Commissioner Barth.
You know, last week, I had not considered that question that I brought up before the meeting. And I certainly didn't want to cause the auditor or the State's Attorney any concern there. And we had the answer within seconds after the meeting was over. But I apologize for any delay.
I have a motion and a second. If there's no additional comments, Commissioner Benica?
Mr. Litz, can you refresh our memory about how much faster these counters are going to be?
Our old machines are about 120 ballots a minute. And the issue with those, you know, that was the latest technology when they came out. But when a ballot is wrinkled, or has a coffee stain, or is mismarked a little bit, it shuts the machine down. This new machine, and so we'll take that ballot and when it shuts it down and take it over to the judges, and they'll look at the ballot and then put it back in, or reject it, or whatever happens. The new machines will do 300 ballots a minute, and they also spit the ballot into a tray when it is mismarked, and therefore it's going to increase our speed by quite a bit.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously to authorize the purchase of the software.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Items 14, 15, and 16 are all supplements to the 2014 budget. And Darlene Johnson will be doing the briefing.
Good morning again. Darlene Johnson from the Auditor's Office. Item number 14 is a request to supplement the general fund to the commission budget, ASN 15067, business travel for $614.62. And the public defender budget, ASN 15764, education and training for $307.40. And that is representing reimbursement from the state of South Dakota for JDAI visit. Questions? It's for three individuals that went on this visit.
Any questions or comments, or if we look for...
Move for approval of the supplement to the general fund from those individual line items.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Item number 15 is a request to supplement the building fund to the building fund budget, ASN 19630, VOA Dakotas. The amount is $55,437.21. This represents insurance reimbursement for damage to the roof at the 51st Street VOA Building.
Any questions?
I'll make the motion. I think it was hailed.
Yep, it was hailed. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
High Burger?
Yes.
Just as a point of information on this one. If we go ahead on this particular building and facilitate the replacement of the roof within the 180-day period, and that we will get an additional $27,587 to pay the balance of that roof cost. So this is going to be one, though, that we'll have to move on rather quickly because we'll have to do bid specifications on this one, and that because of the nature of the work to be done. And we hope we can accomplish that within a time period. It might be dicey because lots of people are busy with roof stuff right now. But that's what we're looking at. So this is only a partial reimbursement for that roof with the balance to come once we actually facilitate the repairs.
Okay. Next one, Darlene.
Item number 16 is a motion to supplement from the general fund to the auditor's elections budget, ASN 15100 for overtime salaries in the amount of $7,154. And ASN 15153, office supplies in the amount of $1,151. And this is representing the reimbursement from the city of Sioux Falls for the April 2014 election.
Any questions for Darlene on this one? Commissioner Kelly?
Does this mean a city election only runs about under $9,000?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Auditor Litz has a comment.
Mr. Kelly, that is just our portion of doing that, which is the ballot tabulation, some prep work that we do, and the absentee time that we put in. They have other expenses over there for their...
Do they do it to the workers and stuff, or...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Look for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Darlene. Item 17, consider a motion to approve professional services agreement between Bill Garnos and Minnehaha County at a rate of $75 per hour, plus expenses for consulting services related to the jail master, planning, pre-design work, and cost preparation. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. In July, the Building Committee recommended that the Commission appoint Bill Garnos to the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee as it moves through its work of reviewing future needs of county jail facilities. Later that same day, at the Commission meeting, the Commission approved and concurred with the Building Committee's recommendation and appointed Mr. Garnos to the Criminal Justice Review Committee. As you know, Mr. Garnos is very familiar with criminal justice facilities and the process here in Minnehaha County as he was prepared the inmate population forecast both last year and also the one 10 or 11 years ago when construction of the current jail was being planned. So he has a long history with the county facilities, and that was one of the main reasons that you felt that that was an appropriate thing to do, to add him to the committee moving forward. What we did not address at that time was Mr. Garnos's compensation rate. And what this service agreement would represent right here is moving forward with his involvement in the committee at the same rate that he was compensated for as he was completing this last inmate population forecast. And that rate is $75 an hour, plus expenses that include 50 cents a mile travel, as well as lodging and meals. This agreement has been reviewed by both State's Attorney's Office and Mr. Garnos, and we bring that to the Commission for your consideration.
Any questions? Commissioner Kelly?
That email letter we got from Bill Garnos the other day, did you share that with the rest of the Commission when he talked about how he performs?
I did, I did not push that out.
Okay. Well, then, I just want to touch on that and help me if I'm wrong here. In the letter, he stated, one, he doesn't charge for travel time. Was that, did I understand that right?
That is correct.
Which, you know, is significant. Has he come out of Minneapolis?
No, he's a suburb of Kansas City.
Okay. And he said oftentimes, he stays with relatives here in town. So he really does do everything he can to keep those costs down to a minimum. And I think Bill's going to be a very valuable asset to us on that committee. So I would urge that we approve this. And I would make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the professional services of Bill Garnos. Any other comments or questions? All those, oh, excuse me.
The only other comment that I would make, other than what Dick said, is that after you've spent a little time with Mr. Garnos, the thing that I think he brings to the group is operational enhancements that will work with, frankly, being efficient with jail flow and moving personnel around, and not moving personnel around, and getting people through the process quickly so you don't need additional staff. So he will more than pay for his abilities and oversight along with his experiences of working in other jail circumstances.
Okay. Any other comments? I have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The next one is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
I have a couple, I guess. The Planning Department is planning to resume hearings on the comprehensive plan for the county and with our new staff members participating. They've contacted the members of that citizen committee, and anyway, they're going to renew their efforts there. Then if I might, on the museum, we had a bit of a dust up, dust in the museum. How could they ever be together? Anyway, about the rock over at the Pettigrew, and it was probably one of the best-attended board meetings that we've had. And of course, the museum board determined to maintain the rock here in Sioux Falls. But, you know, it is a pretty unique object, and I think that the attention that it's gotten might lead to sort of a renewed appreciation of it. And, you know, we've all talked about the problems with crime in our community, and part of it is the change in culture that we've had. And I think that along with schools and churches and families, the museum is a participant in maintaining our community's culture. And when we go look at this prehistoric rock that predates the Sioux being in this area, you can only wonder about it. And then when you connect that to Senator Pettigrew acquiring it, again, there's sort of, it's interesting. And I think that, I think the museum is underappreciated in the sense that it passes on our culture.
Commissioner Kelly?
Jeff, if I recall, we were beginning that, or in part, along the way on that comprehensive study when I came on six years ago. I hope that maybe they'll put that in some sort of priority and get it done.
What, what part of that is the priority?
Well, the whole comprehensive plan.
Oh, yes. Yes, absolutely.
They've been dragging on with a lot of reasons.
Yeah, but they, well, I've only talked to Scott about it, but they're planning on, they even have a date for their next meeting set up. So I do believe we'll be seeing some progress on that in the next few months.
Any other liaison reports?
Well, did we discuss the committee? We went over most of the Criminal Justice Committee, but did we discuss that the chairman had to resign because of business reasons last week? I can't remember.
We did not.
And so there will be, it's going to have to be replaced. Robert, if you want to address a little bit, but I think the status is we're moving forward. It's just sometimes slower than some of us want.
Craig Anderson, who was appointed as chairman of the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, did advise the committee last week that he was going to be forced to resign due to some work commitments of his own. And we certainly reached out to Mr. Anderson and thanked him for his tremendous work over the course of more than a year, and he brought really a lot of expertise to that committee, and brought, and he brought really a, a lot of expertise to that, that committee and we're, we're better for it. But yes, with his absence, there are, there are some discussions going on of some, some recommendations that the committee might bring to the Commission for adding, replacing the chairman and then also potentially adding some additional members. That is a, the membership on that committee is responsibility of the, the Commission and any new book, new members would be appointed by the Commission, but I, I do expect that members of the committee will be bringing forward names for Commission consideration. There may be other, other names that are, that are offered as well, but that, that is a, a process that's ongoing, but at, at this point, I don't, my understanding is that the committee is not ready to, to make any recommendations or to, to share any of those names at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm thinking maybe the Commission should have a letter of thanks to Mr. Anderson composed.
Good idea.
Anything else, liaison reports? Any new business? Any old business? Commissioner Barth?
I just want to comment on the Sioux Empire Fair, which I attended all but one day. Some days were pretty long, but it, it went pretty well. There was one interesting thing, I still don't know its origin, is that there were drones flying over the fairgrounds. Do they belong to us? I don't know. Maybe they were sending some deep fried cheese curds someplace. But truly, that Pipestone Building, what a fabulous facility. That thing is incredible and in talking with some of the Pipestone people, they, they have the same facility over there at the Minnesota State Fairgrounds and they thought that it was working better for us because it wasn't as crowded as at Minnesota. They have 100,000 people a day attend their state fair and so they actually had room for the kids to hold a baby chick or to pet a piglet or whatever. And certainly the facts of life were on full display there and I, I can't, this is the most exciting thing I've seen out there in, in all my years as a county commissioner. It really is fabulous and I really appreciate the donation they've made to us and I sent that to them. Have we ever thanked them, Ken? Have we written them a letter?
Right, another one.
Okay, good. I don't know how the attendance was, you know, it had a couple days of rain, but that Pipestone facility, wow.
Yeah. I have to say, and we have the old McDonald's Farm, which has always been wonderful, kids could go through and see farm animals, but in the Pipestone Building, it's, it's hands-on. Those kids get to pick up the chicks and it was fun to go in there and sit there, watch all those little kids holding these baby chicks and, and it was, it was really quite an improvement of, and I went over to Old McDonald's Farm too and it's, it's clean and it's nice and, and it was also packed with kids, but being able to let them actually pick up stuff was pretty, pretty cool, pretty cool. It was a great fair again. Any other old business?
All right, with that, we will adjourn into executive session and reserve the possibility of reconvening into regular session for contracts and legal briefing.
No motion, second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.